It's seven o'clock, we're all here. I'm going to call the meeting of Milton Plan Commission for Tuesday, May 9th, 2017, to order. Well, I know the roll call isn't there, but I was just thinking, since there are so many new members, if we just go with introductions. So, should we start with you, Kurt?
What do you want me to say?
Whatever you want to say about yourself.
So, I'm Kurt Paulson. I live in Middleton Hills. Been on the Workforce Housing Committee for a couple of years. And I teach urban planning at UW-Madison. So, I specialize in housing and land use and public finance, which is all the boring, uncontroversial stuff.
Wonderful.
Hi, I'm Lee Pappert. Been on the Plan Commission for a couple of years. Been around the city of Middleton for a couple more. I guess professionally, I'm a landscape architect for the state of Wisconsin Department of Transportation.
Well, my name is Gurdeep Brah, so I'm the new mayor of Middleton. Yeah, well, maybe we can come back to that.
Okay, we'll come back.
Now, you can go ahead and say.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm Ali Pelly, and I have been with the city since May 2nd, 1988. There's not many things I can say.
Approximately.
Approximately. Eight AM in the morning.
Kathy Olson, I'm the council rep to the Plan Commission. So, I've been on the committee for...
Five minutes.
Two weeks. Commission, yeah.
I'm Cindy Zellers. I've lived in Middleton for forty-some, forty years, I think. Been on the Plan Commission for a long time. I retired from the Department of Transportation for several years.
Dennis Dorn, and I'm retired from the university as well, and have been on the Plan Commission a couple of years.
David Reed, new to this. Architect, planner, working mainly in the sort of the urban design kind of scale. What environments are going to look like in the future?
All right. Abby and then Mark.
Abby, it's you. I work in the Planning Department. I'm the Director of Community Development. I work on community and economic development, housing, sustainability, landmarks, public art, et cetera.
Mark.
Mark Opitz, loser of arm wrestling contests. Worked for the city for the last eighteen years. I staff the Airport Commission and the Pedestrian Bicycle Transit Committee and the zoning Board of Appeals, and oversee the sign ordinance, administration of the sign ordinance, the lighting ordinance, and other duties as assigned.
Okay, wonderful. So, all right, so now we, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from April 25th.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? So, I call the question. All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay. So, then the next big item is the concept review for the proposed general implementation plan modification, Middleton Center, 7507 Hubbard Avenue. So...
Before the puppy takes over, do you want me to...
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. This got approval, the GIP got approval last year on several changes to it, and now they're proposing another change. One is to subtract almost 20,000 square feet of office and substitute 14 apartments, and also to go from the approved 110 seats, you know, seat restaurant, to 305. And it's not here tonight for any action, it's here just to talk about the changes. We've got Walker Parking looking at some of those things. There are some issues with that parking, and some things that will have to get discussed. But it's here tonight just to talk about it. Two of the things that, you know, we're concerned about is wanting to make sure that there is still that mixed-use office, at least some component. If 20,000 square feet are subtracted, there would still be 24,000 square feet. 36,000 was originally approved last year, bumped up in December, 2016. The other thing is just to ensure that the shared parking works. And what, we've been very careful through that analysis with Walker Parking. They're national experts to look at what, you know, how can we maybe step down a little bit from our ordinance to recognize that it is a mixed-use, and there will be some shared parking. But we'll want them to review any proposed change before the Plan, likely before the Plan Commissioner or Council add on it.
So, the way I look at it is that this is a very important project for the downtown area, so we have to get it right. So, I think we want to make sure that the Walker, they look at it very carefully, because we don't want to create a big parking problem here. So, it is, it's also a complicated project, so. So, do you want to now...
Let me ask one procedural question, just to make sure I understand. The GIP was approved, as I recall and as I read in these documents, for the whole project. Then the SIP were approving in pieces for the individual phases.
Phase one was approved and is being built.
Right. So, the reason we're back to the GIP now is because, because we have to go back to the GIP anytime anything is changed.
Anytime they change something like this, where they're reducing, changing the square footages and the number of apartments, and then the parking.
So, we modify the GIP, then we either modify or approve the SIP as a separate step. Okay, thank you.
I've got a question as well, which is, well, just to express the concern, I'm not real peachy keen on this idea, I must say. And I'm, I worry about a possible glut down the road of apartments. And I would, I think I would be much more in favor of doing something like this if, in fact, that second floor of residential was built in such a way that it could easily be converted.
Nothing.
Because what we have is, you know, people coming to eat, and that is just, I think that kind of destroys the entire concept, well, destroys the entire concept. It stretches the concept that this whole thing was based on.
This is a concept review on the GIP amendment for the change of the land use for Phase Two and Three?
Well, just for, yeah, exactly.
Any other questions? So, do we let, so, Terrence, you want to start, show what you have, what your plans are then?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought this was my...
Thank you. So, I'm Terrence Waller, developer of Middleton Center. And for the new members, I'll just give a little bit of background on Middleton Center, since you're new. Rest of you can hang in here, hopefully. So, we're developing Middleton Center into three phases. It was originally six buildings, two stories each, built 35 years ago. And those buildings are functionally obsolete. They don't have elevators, they're not ADA compliant, HVAC systems are failing all the time. So, we are redeveloping it into a higher-density urban-type environment with apartments above and first-floor retail and restaurants. And then we also have Building A, which is right on Parmenter, and that's the office building. So, we've got office, we've got retail, restaurant, and we've got apartments. And that'll be built in three phases. Phase one will be open this June, and that's made up of two buildings. And then Phase Two will start construction this June, and then finish in 12 months. And then Phase Three would start next year in June, finish 12 months later. What you're looking at here is, is part of Phase Two. And we'll continue that urban look, where we have the storefronts and the ground-floor retail with apartments above. Now, I'm going to talk to you about what our request is. Our request is to change Building D, which is this building, on the second floor. We had planned about 20,000 square feet of office space. Now, remember, we still have office space, all of Building A is office space. And we had a tenant who was going to lease that whole thing. They'd signed a letter of intent, they're going to lease the entire floor, and then they pulled out. So, we've been trying to find another tenant who would lease that space, and have been unable to find one. And it's difficult to get the loan closed with that as office space without having it pre-leased. Now, I can do a certain amount of space, the retail space, without it being pre-leased, because it's a small percentage of the total building. But when you start throwing in a whole floor of 20,000 square feet of office space, it overwhelms the percentages, and the lenders get very nervous. So, if I convert that to 14 apartments, I also help the parking issue. I actually remove the parking demand that was for the office during, during that busy weekday period, which is the primary concern. And instead, it's apartments, so it becomes nighttime parking. So, we're shifting the demand from weekday, which is the concern, to nighttime, which is no concern. Now, I'm going to walk you through the parking as I see it. We're still waiting for the update from Walker Parking Consultants. That's going to be coming in, and we're going to have that before we come back to you and revisit this issue at the next meeting. So, if you could pull that board down. Thank you. What do you have up? Say, plan up would be good. Put that up. Okay, thank you. So, Building, Building A and B here is what's opening this June. Building C and D is what will be Phase Two, starting construction this summer. And then Phase Three is over here, E, F, and G. So, D is the one where we're switching the office space to apartments, and C is all apartments with at-grade parking. Now, there's a giant parking garage under both A and B, and there's a giant parking garage under C and D, and there's a giant parking garage under all three of these buildings. So, the garage is completely open under all the, each of those phases, so it's one giant garage. It's not separate garages under each building.
Terrence, Kurt has a question.
One big garage.
Building A is office and retail?
Office, yes, with retail first floor.
And B is retail and apartments?
Yes, yes.
And there's 24,000 square feet of office in A?
Yes.
The current map for Phase Three shows two separate parking lots.
I'm going to just pull this up here, this will be easier, so I'm not standing in your way. In Phase One, we have 40,000 square feet of commercial. The majority of that is office space in A. And then we have, in Phase Two would be, we'd still have 14,000 square feet of retail in Phase Two. In Phase Three, we have about 5,500 square feet of retail. Now, so in addition to making that change with, from the simple, part of the office going to apartments, which will help us get the loan closed, but also, what we're finding is that when the brokers bring us office tenants, they're basically trying to get rents of in the range of $18, $16, $18 per foot. We have to charge at least $28 a foot to make it work, because it's new construction. New construction is extraordinarily expensive, especially at this site, because this site has pilings that go, was it 100 or 170, 100 feet deep on all these buildings? There's pilings. There's a 35 to 45-foot layer of clay down there we have to go through. And then there's environmental contamination of Phase Two, and there's shoring of the road. There's just a lot of extraordinary costs on the project, so it makes the project expensive. Now, here's how we see the parking concerns. Now, these are my, these are my numbers, and I'll tell you where these came from.
Same is in here?
I don't know if that's in there. Do you have a handout?
I can see it.
Yeah. We have a handout.
Could you bring it?
She can't see it.
Yeah.
None of us can see it.
Well, it's the same thing that's in here.
Terrence, we can look at it on here, too.
Now I can see it.
David can't see it.
The same as this. The same as this.
So, the weekday, this is, we looked at three areas of concern, three areas of concern, which are different timeframes, and we want to reassure you that, in our opinion, we have plenty of parking. But, we're going to wait for the Walker Parking Study update to come. Now, we have 206 apartments. We would be putting in 14 new apartments and taking out the part of the office, so we'd have 220 apartments total. This is all three phases. All of our buildings, all the apartments we have across the entire county, which is over 1,000 units. We go with a 1.1 ratio, is what we find works very well, and that would mean we'd need 242 spaces. Now, this is not what Walker says, and not what the city code is. I'm just giving you background of what we experience in the marketplace. Now, so we'll need at night 242 spaces. We'll have 388. Now, in your numbers, you'll see a number like 402, because we're going to have some community cars. And the community cars, we get a credit for the parking, because some people won't have a car, they'll be able to use the community car. So, we actually have 388 actual spaces. So, we'll have a surplus at night of 146 spaces. Can you pop the next slide? So, then what about weekday? This would be like during the office day, eight to five. We have retail space, we have office space, total about 46,000 square feet. The code requires one per 300, so we'd need 156 spaces for that square footage. Add in the restaurants. The code is different for restaurants. So, we take the, the restaurant square footage is not in this number, because we have to do a separate calculation. So, you take the number of seats, 324, divide it one for every three seats, you need 108 spaces. So, you need 156 plus 108 gets you 264 spaces. Now, we're providing 388. Again, that's not including the community cars. So, we'll have a surplus of 124. So, during the critical weekday period, we actually, we'll meet the code for restaurants and for the office and retail, and we'll have a surplus using the code. Okay? The next one. What about the weekday dinner hour? Okay, so the weekday dinner hour, because you've got some overlap. You've got some overlap of restaurant people coming with apartment people coming home at night, right, after 5:00. So, what happens? So, that peak hour for like 5:00 to 7:00 PM, the parking demand is 108. If 85, if we just make a number like 85% of the people in the apartments come home at 5:00, which doesn't happen, but let's just say 85% did come home at 5:00, that would be 206. That means we need 314. We still have a surplus of 74 spaces. So, and then there's the weekend question. The weekend question, I didn't even bother with, because on weekend, there's over, like 1,900 parking spaces around downtown that are mostly vacant on the weekends, except for maybe the lunch hour, the street spaces fill up. So, you have another slide, I think? Do you have the marginal analysis? Okay. Can you bring that up? So, this is a marginal analysis. If you could back up. Yeah, thank you. So, this is a marginal analysis. We had approval, we have approval for 4,000 square feet of restaurant space, and we are, our first restaurant is 3287, so we have some leftover approved restaurant space of 713 square feet. If you add in the restaurants, okay, the square footage really doesn't matter, this is just for reference, but if you add in their seating over here, and then you look at the code, take that number, divide by three, basically, we would need, if we took out the office and we added in the restaurants, we would need 42 spaces more. This is just a very rough marginal analysis. It's not, you know, highly detailed. It's just to give you an idea, if you took out the office, you would save 42 spaces, and you put in the restaurants, and the apartments, you would need 42. It's roughly equal, it's an equal swap, is what I'm showing. That's just, again, a very rough ballpark-type marginal analysis. Okay? So, the marginal analysis indicates an equal swap. That this will allow us to have more parking available on the critical weekday period, whereas the apartment will provide it, you know, is creating demand at night, when we've got lots of parking, and weekends, we've got lots of parking. So, what we're doing is requesting that we switch out the office to 14 apartments, we get approval for some additional restaurants. We also have agreed, or offered, that we would not gate our underground parking. We were originally intended to put in gates, because we were concerned about people just coming in, you know, let's say employees of other businesses and coming in and tying up. We're going to offer underground parking spaces available to downtown employees. If they want to park with us, we'll rent them spaces. We're offering to do that. And we're offering not, and we're not gate our parking. We'll have a garage door at night to secure it, but during the day, we're not going to have it gated as part of this arrangement. And obviously, we'll have to police it, you know, we don't want to have somebody in there for eight hours parking for free, because everyone else is going to have, be effectively paying for parking. So, we want to have, some policing we'll do, but if somebody wants to park in there and go to a, the muster museum or something, you know, and there for an hour or two, we're not going to be policing it every hour, you know, so they'll be able to do that, and then be able to exit. So, we're offering that as an additional bonus for the city. As far as the restaurant space, let me give you a little background on the retail. So, the retail space is, we are, we are trying to get retail tenants, our broker has contacted over 400 retailers, and it's very difficult to get retail product. That's what we, that's what our goal was, to get somebody who sells a product. Let's say it's women's clothing, or men's clothing, or bicycles, or something like that. And we're finding at the internet, Amazon is making it very difficult for retailers to compete. What we are finding good demand on is service-oriented businesses, and we have a couple of those we're negotiating with. Those require less parking, by the way. So, we are going to be putting out a couple letters of intent for some smaller service-oriented businesses on the first floor, and those will, will tell you later, once we know that they're signed, because then they're going to require less parking, so that'll help also. But restaurant space, we are getting good demand for restaurant space, and restaurant space will activate downtown, it'll make downtown very, much more dynamic, you know, compared to other communities, and not a lot of restaurants downtown here at night that you can go to. The whole idea is to get people to come down here, have dinner, hang out, you know, I mean, with families, whatever, and enjoy downtown, walk over to the other businesses, and patronize them as well. So, we are getting good demand from restaurants. We would really like to get some additional restaurants approved for the parking, and the reason is that we've got to, obviously, get the space leased, but I'm letting you know, we're also going to balance that with some of these other businesses that we're going to hopefully sign here in the next few weeks. And then, the office to apartments is because I don't think we're ever going to get that 20,000 square feet leased, certainly not the rent, you know, we need. We're under a challenge right now in getting Building A leased, second floor and third floor. We're, you know, right now, we're just getting challenged on getting those, that space leased. That's enough to take care of for right now. So, we have, I think, a good plan that will be good for the city. It's, I think, a better outcome than to have empty vacant space sitting there, because that's not good for the project, it's not good for the city, it's not good for valuations and assessments, it's not good for anything. It will still be, it'll be even a more active and vibrant and dynamic Middleton Center. You know, sure, we would have loved to keep that one tenant in the office space, but, you know, that's their choice. They're, they're moving down to the Hilldale, Hilldale area in a tower down there, so. So, that's my presentation. You're not taking any action tonight, we're just giving you information. When we meet in four weeks, we'll have more information for you, just give you the background. I'm happy to take questions at this time.
Any questions for Terrence? Dennis?
I'm going to ask, I can't, well, let me go back to the parking issue, which is a different issue than the first one I brought up, but I remember correctly, I heard you say that there was, there was, all, all these buildings were connected with a single garage. And I'm looking at a drawing that you sent that shows that Phase Three has two garages.
So, let me clarify, because I wasn't very clear when I said that, is that each phase, so Building A and B have one garage underneath both buildings, there's no separation there. It's one big garage. C and D, same thing, one big garage under the whole thing. This also has some surface parking here, and then on C, we have at-grade parking under almost this entire building. That means it's right at the surface level, but you're under the building, but you have another layer of parking here. In B, we have another 10 spaces at-grade here for quick in-and-out customers, and then we have garages here. We have, I'm not sure, I think there's two garages here. We're still trying to figure out if we can connect that. If there are utilities here, we can't, but if, if we can, we're going to do that, but we're, we're looking at that. So, we've got some pretty big garages. This garage, by the way, oops, did I do that?
Yeah, you have the clicker, too.
This garage, by the way, is extra tall. We have parking lifts in there as well. And we can add, by the way, if you are concerned about parking, which, I'll be honest with you, we've got tons of parking here. We're going to have probably 90 spaces empty every day, every hour of every day. But we have the ability in this garage here to add, I think, is it 17 more lifts? 17 more lifts. So, if there's a problem down the road, you could have an approval where it says, condition on the city administrator, or city staff, or city planner, you know, could give us an order at any time and say, hey, put those 17 lifts in if we need them down the road. Now, before we start construction here, we're also going to have a year of occupancy and operations here, but we'll be able to see, before we start here, if we need an extra parking. In theory, we could also add some lifts in this garage as well, if it was needed. So, that's a backup, if, if there was a concern, you've got that as a backup to say, hey, we're going to have the right, reserve the right, direct those in the future.
This is of no importance whatsoever, but my first experience with lifts occurred in 1971 in New York City, and my car was lost. Yes, it was quite, it was quite frustrating. I don't like lifts at all, and I, I, as I look at this, and I mean, I buy into your shared thing, don't, and I'm not concerned about that at all, but it looks to me that if you were to connect Phase Three buildings, and I know you, you have to move some utilities, but, you know, they can be moved.
Not necessarily.
You would eliminate, you would, according to my just rough calculation, which I used, you know, one of these little things, a piece of paper with little dots on it, show where the parking places are, you know? I put that down, there are going to be, without any problem, another 12 parking stalls down there. If you connected them all, you would, you could lose one of the ramps. That's going to give some more parking stalls.
But we're looking at that.
And I'm assuming that what you're doing, now that this is going over as far as it can to, Baca, who is that? Masons.
Oh, Baccan's.
Baccan, yeah. To Baccan's property.
This?
Yes, yeah. And if not, could it be expanded a little bit that direction?
We'll make a note of that, and we'll double-check that.
Because, nobody's, you know, this whole thing, I mean, you're already losing places because of the, with the ramp or the lifts, because just negotiating things back and forth. I'd like to see a solution that was just cleaner. I mean, it's nice that we have the extra space, and we could do that if we really needed it, but one of the things that people in this city, and I don't agree with them, but there is a strong, strong perception that we do not have sufficient parking. And you can throw all these numbers at them that you want, and, you know, the Middleton landed gentry have their thought.
So, you're right about that perception, and that's because, you know, Middleton used to be a bedroom community. Now, it's a real city, and people grew up with this idea that they could park right in front of the store, and they don't have to walk anywhere, they don't have to walk a half a block or a block. That's just not reality anymore, we all know that. At the lunch hour, the street parking is full here, and some of the parking next to this building. But there are 1,900 parking spaces available within like a, I don't know, call it a two, three-block radius. For example, you know, the BMO lot is empty. They allow people to park there for lunch or for dinner, they don't ticket anybody. You've got the parking lot next to the city hall, you've got the parking lot at the fire station, you know, there's tons of parking available. It's just people don't want to walk a block to their destination.
Who knows that? I would never dream of going over to BMO Harris and park to go to lunch.
Right. So, one thing...
Is there something that says, "Lunch customers, welcome, please park here"?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's...
No, I know, it's a perception thing. I get it. But, now, as far as the lifts, do you remember Manchester Place?
Oh, yeah.
Remember that? I was a kid, my mom would drive us there, and they'd take the car, and would raise it up and put it in the slot or whatever.
Get lost.
That's not what this is.
I know, I know that.
So, this is, you come into the garage, you walk into your garage, your car's already parked, let's say, you walk in the garage, just, I'm in space, let's six, hit six, and it rotates your car down. it rotates your car down, you get in, you're back out, you go. So, when you're coming into the garage, you just pull into the, to an at-grade space, and if later the lift needs to move your car, it will move your car, and these are only small lifts, they're typically, I think, the biggest one we have is a six-pack, right? So, it's four packs and six-packs, it's not like 50 cars on a lift, it's a six-pack, and a six-pack, and a six-pack, so there's always one space open, so you're going to only take like 30 seconds for your car to rotate down, if it's on the upper level. Quite honestly, we have so much parking, I don't see those upper spaces being used. As I showed you here, we have got a ton of parking to satisfy our needs.
I know.
So, other questions?
I won't say anymore, that's just that perception.
David and Cindy.
Terrence, you, you quickly passed over service areas. Servicing for restaurants is different than servicing for officers. Are you comfortable with the servicing of the restaurants?
Do you mean, like deliveries and things, or?
I, I mean, like Cisco Systems coming and delivering food.
Right, okay, yeah, so, so deliveries and things like that?
Yes.
Right, okay. So, we have provided 10 spaces at the at-grade, right behind the restaurants, they do have a back door to every rest, or every retail space has a back door, so they could take service in there, but if it's a Cisco-type truck, they're not going to be able to go in there. So, they'll take delivery, they're going to have to take delivery, you know, in the morning, when they're closed, or whatever, through their front door, or the side door, some of the corner units will have side doors. So, that will be what they'll have to do, and it's just necessary for an urban environment to, you know, to do that. Now, they could walk down this corridor, they could, you know, park here, remember, these spaces are empty except at lunch hour, so they could park here, walk down the corridor, and then right back in through this corridor, and come in the back of the restaurant, so they could do that, or they can go down here, same thing, and come in through the back door for deliveries if they want. But this is, you know, remember, this is the urban development, it's a, you know, it's a downtown development, this is not suburbia, you know, you know, your, I think your parking code requires, I don't know, what, like 600 spaces or something, yeah, it's a huge number that your parking code requires.
So, do we have a system in the city saying, no, you know, no, no parking, or service delivery has to be before 10 o'clock or something?
That's a good question, I don't think we do, and sometimes in downtown-
Out here, we don't, yeah.
It does create issues downtown for the restaurants, so that's a good thing, but maybe we should look at that.
Yes, mm-hmm. See, we've done that with our-
Just a minute, Van, plus Cindy, and Cindy, you have some questions?
I, I do. I'm, I'm very curious about, and, and a little apprehensive about a project that we, maybe more than a little apprehensive, we approved a GIP for this project not all that long ago, and I would have assumed that you guys had a pretty good handle on who you could attract to be tenants in these buildings over that time, and now we're, we haven't even finished building Phase One, and you're proposing substantial changes in what we approved originally, and I'm apprehensive that what is to be coming with Phase Two and Phase Three in the future. So, I'm, I'm very curious about how this process works in your mind, that, that we could be, or you could be this far off on what you thought would be the final distribution of space in this project.
So, it's, it's somewhat unpredictable, I mean, the market is changing all the time, I, as a person, I cannot predict the future. The demand for product-based retailers has declined quite a bit, as I said, we've gone through 400 retailers, talked to them, in every product type you can think of, bicycles, whatever, and it, it's not predictable, you know, now, when we planned the office space, I would never have put this office space on the second floor of Building D, except we had a company that was really hot on coming to downtown, and had signed a letter of intent. Now, it's not binding, you know, they're bound when they sign the lease, so in between there, they changed their mind and decided to go elsewhere. So, that's not predictable, you know, I mean, we went down that path based on this interest of this particular company, and now, in talking, we've been talking to a number of office brokers, and we've talked with office tenants, and we are getting, you know, office tenants who, you know, they can go elsewhere for less money, right? I mean, they want to be, if you want to be an office tenant here, you want to be downtown, you want to pay a little extra, be downtown, for the excitement of downtown, the convenience of the food, and all the choices you have, et cetera, et cetera. If you just want cheap rent, you know, go out onto the periphery, into the suburbs, or whatever. But we now have some, a good year under our belt of leasing activity, talking with hundreds of prospects, both office and retail, and restaurant, and, you know, we see where the demand is heavily in the, in the service and in the restaurant for the first-floor space, and then we're, you know, we're challenged, we're challenged on the office side. But, I'm not worried about the apartments, I'll tell you that, apartments in downtowns, like downtowns like Middleton, or downtowns like Madison, they always stay full, I mean, you know, even in recession, apartments in downtown Madison did exceptionally well. People, when they move into apartments in a downtown, they typically stay for a long, till the end of their life, and they typically, it's a lifestyle choice, they're there for the rest of their life, it's not the transient type, some people on the periphery, you know, they might go in an apartment for two or three years, and then move, maybe they move to a house, maybe they move to another apartment. But apartments downtown have always been really, really stable, and so I have very little to no concern about these apartments filling up and staying full, and really providing a very dynamic living environment for people who are then going to shop downtown, eat downtown, I mean, we can't always go to Hubbard Diner, you know what I mean? You know, I love Hubbard Diner, but, you know, at a certain point, I like a little variety, and I think other people are telling me the same thing, they'd like to get some variety in the food here downtown.
So, Terrence, I got just a follow-up on the same thing, so, so what happens, let's say you are already built up, and you find the same situation as you do now, so what would be, in this case, we are still in somewhat early stages, that the Phase Two, you haven't started to build it, so what will be, you will do the same thing, come back here to make changes, or what will be your option then? Because, see, in this case, as Cindy said, the GIP was approved just not, not long ago, and how far are you that what you're proposing now is what you're going to stick with?
The, we know that we've got a, a second restaurant on a signed lease, that obviously has a contingency for city approval. We've got, we've got, I've lost everything. We've got the extra restaurant demand, we have a couple of service businesses that are coming this next week, so I'm very confident that will fill up the, a lot of the first-floor space, I think we'll only have one suite left, maybe two small suites left, one apartment turn one on Hubbard. The apartments, there's still extremely strong demand for apartments, I try back, all three phases have been at or near 100% all the time, there's tremendous demand for apartments to continue, especially, apartments, sorry, then it's, it's, it usually occurs on the periphery, it doesn't usually occur in the downtowns.
Okay, thank you. Van, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to address the up and below zones, if we're to mark certain service areas, we lose customer parking during, and we end up with Middleton Chamber, most of the restaurant deliveries are done very early in the morning, until about 11 o'clock, they'll actually park on the street, Cisco and, and the others, and they'll deliver via that one point to most of the restaurants, by taking up a lane of the street for all practical purposes. And they kind of figured that out on their own, that that's really the only way to navigate down there, because once the street fills up with cars, and parking is built, there's, there's no way to get some of those semis through.
Okay, thank you, Van.
Um, when you had the office tenant, you came and we, we approved more office space at that time, and increased the office space, how many square foot was?
Yes, um, Tyler, do you remember the extra office space we added, the office portion versus the retail?
Yeah, you went from 36,000 to 43,500, I think.
So, I had an exhibit, I don't have that here, I don't think, I don't think you have it at a computer, but it showed little slices, it was really, we were adding office space, but there was some differential between our count and your count, because you use gross, okay, and I use BOMAs, the national standard, net rentable, but, so there was some difference just in the difference in how the count was done, so we wanted to correct that, and then there were little slices here, there, and everywhere that, you know, that were being done, because when you did preliminary approval under GIP or GIP, you know, you're not doing final plans until you get to SIP, so once we got to the SIP, and we had all the plans, and this, everything surveyed out in exact dimensions, then we needed to true up that office space, so we were adding a little bit here, a little bit there, you know, and truing that up.
Could you go back to what it originally was?
Without the, adding the 14 apartments then?
No, because- Those are, those little trips are little slices, little piece here, little piece there, little piece there, it was just little pieces as we had finalized the drawings on the building.
But you had a large portion dedicated for this office tenant?
Yeah, so, the whole floor, and the, and the second floor of Building D.
That would increase the square footage, right?
Oh, so, we added, right, so, oh, I see what you're saying, so, we, yes, we originally had 13, we went up to 20, and then we did take that, we did reduce the second floor hangover, overhang, so when they pulled out, we reduced that overhang to reduce this, but under your count, we would be removing about 19,000 square feet, you know, you're, again, using gross numbers, I'm using a different number, it's about 16, but, so we did take out some of that, yes.
But how many parking spaces would do, would be eliminated if you didn't build that 7,000 square feet, how many parking spaces?
And that's what we need, well, that's what we need.
If you went back to the original plan.
Yeah.
Again, we're taking out the whole floor of office, converting it to apartments, and that would, you can go to that marginal analysis again, so, I think that, so that takes out, let me just look for office, oh, so, if we take out 19,000 square feet, which is really gross here, but 64 spaces were needed for that, so we're removing 64 spaces of demand during the weekday, that's a big number.
But that 19 includes the 7,000 that was added late at-
Yes, yes, yeah, so we're taking out 64.
Went back to 12,000.
So, that's a big number, I mean, that's, you know, we're reducing parking demand by 64 spaces during the weekday, that's a big thing, and we're putting in parking demand at night for the apartments.
But the restaurants, they're planning on being open days and evenings?
Yes, yeah, but they're really, right, people aren't patronizing at the lunch hour and the dinner hour, you know, there's, people aren't sitting there at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, you know, so, and that demand is shown here, and, you know, 70, but we already have, already included, so the net is 42. Because remember, we have parking provided for that retail space already, so we net that off, so you're not double-counting.
Oh, just a different calculation with the restaurant?
Yes, David.
You speak, you keep speaking as if downtown is a special place, and I agree with you. One of the things of being downtown is that you don't use your car. How many, what percentage of people are you counting on to use their car every day?
So, the, well, there's different answers to that, so, we have, I'm just thinking this for a minute. We didn't, we did a, a parking count of our Tribeca Village and other properties around town, I'll just use Tribeca, so we counted the number of parking, or, excuse me, we counted the number of vehicles at 10:00 AM and 3:00 PM in the garages of Tribeca Village every day for a couple of weeks. So, we found that on a day-to-day basis, that between, I think it was 21% of the cars were there, oh, thank you, that's, that's exactly right, so, yeah, it was like, okay, so, the low number was 7% of the cars were there during the, during the weekday, okay, in the garage, so 7% out of the total, 100%, okay, and then the high was 38%. So, between 7% and 38%, had a car in the garage of the apartment building during the weekday for a brief, you know, for a period of time, we don't know how long that was, could have been a half hour, could have been all day.
And I should point out that those are numbers that Terrence has had in his other projects, Walker Parking's not using that, they're using something that's higher to be conservative, they're looking at nationwide, what would be the standard, and then, you know, building in some, I think that's one of the reasons Terrence isn't too happy with the Walker Parking to date, but we feel good about it, because probably when people live downtown, there is going to be some difference in how they interact, or, you know, if they need their car, and they walk to the library, or, you know, whatever, so we will bring back all the assumptions that Walker Parking is making in their analysis.
For example, Walker's is using 61%, they assume that 61% of the apartment residents leave their car in the garage all day long, Monday through Friday, 61%. Now, keep in mind that Walker is using data from big cities, where-
Actually not.
You know, well, that's what he told me, where people, yeah, but he's also assuming no tran, no public transit either, you know, there, people in big cities take a subway, they leave their car in the apartment building, you know, in West, we all drive, right? I mean, now, we are providing community cars, we agreed to that, we were going to provide bicycle, but the prior council said they didn't want to bother with that, we were willing to put in a bicycle station, we are providing hundreds of, a couple hundred bicycle spaces for people who own bicycles, we're going to have a bicycle room that's dedicated, so we are providing what we can in alternative transportation, you know, Van, Van made a good point, which is, you know, we should really talk to, or the city should talk to Madison Metro about getting some later-night bus service for employees of the restaurants, that makes sense, you know, makes a ton of sense for downtown.
Absolutely.
I mean, we've got to make, this is a real city now, you know.
So, I'm going to ask, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry, professional hazard, I have a bunch of questions, is, is that the reason why you say on page four that the Walker Parking study is flawed, because of the assumption?
So, there's a number of assumptions, I don't want to get into that tonight, but, but, yeah, there's a number of assumptions that I will show that are flawed, but I'm waiting for Eileen's counterpoint to my point, and then I need to verify all of that to make sure.
But you, you understand that, you know, at least for those of us in the business, Walker is the gold standard, so there's a-
Right.
Certain assumption, so if they assume that 61% of apartment cars are left in during the day, on page two, when you show this weekday parking demand showing a surplus of 124, you're assuming that exactly 0% of all apartment cars are left in the stalls?
Right, yeah, that's just to show-
Which is probably too much the other way.
Right, yes.
So-
But I remember, our surplus is so huge, that, you know, a large percent could stay.
Well, but if your surplus is, if 38% of apartment owners' cars are left in the garage during the day, your surplus, your day surplus goes away.
It could be a deficit.
So, somewhere between 0 and 68%, we have to figure out what's a good assumption.
Yeah, exactly.
And it's-
Right.
Probably not 0, and it's probably not 68, but-
Yeah, exactly, that's exactly right, something in between.
But that's a, that's a big gap to close, so there, there's three items on the GIP modification that we're being asked to consider, right, there's two changes of use, and then the third is the attendant change in parking, and I just-
Yes.
From my perspective, studying housing, I think you're right, that the demand for downtown housing is going to stay strong, plain vanilla locations is getting a little soft right now, but what, these 14 units, what sizes are these going to be?
Um, well, do you know the mix at all, exact mix, or not?
Studios, ones and twos, and twos, or fours? Studios, ones and twos, and so like, the price of the twos would be?
Hmm, it's like $2,200.
How much?
Like $2,200.
$2,200.
Yeah, because the cost of construction is high, I mean, it's not cheap, but that's what's being paid in other locations, yeah.
But I think that's, I agree with your point, that that generates a lot of demand for the various restaurants and-
Right.
-service industries in town, so.
I mean, I'm excited, you add in this, plus the town, you know, and a town square, you know, where some additional street parking will be built, I think you're going to have a really cool, vibrant downtown, and it's really going to be exciting.
If, so if there's, you say there's- If, so if there's, you say there's a surplus, but we're not sure of that, of parking. If there's a conflict, the apartment owners will have numbered stalls that indicate this is their stall? No? Okay.
Normally do that, but we agreed, would not...
Okay.
So they just come in, they park wherever they want. Because that way, you don't run into this problem of bumping.
And the parking is included in the rent?
Yes, so we normally don't do that either, but we agreed we would do that here.
Remember this discussion at Housing, too? And it's guaranteed one or two stalls, or just any number you want?
Um, it's... One for studio, one for one bedroom, and two for the two bedroom.
But conceivably, if they had guests staying for a while, since the parking isn't pleased, they would just pull into the garage anyway?
Yeah.
And then the, the second modification is, some of the retail becomes, uh, restaurant?
Restaurant, right. And hopefully I'll have a couple of...
And that's in phase two, or phase one?
Uh, phase one.
And two.
Phase one, I'm sorry, it's 14 square feet in phase two.
So the parking requirements are being calculated on the whole site as a whole?
Yes.
Even though they may not all be provided in each phase as appropriate?
Correct.
It's being evaluated phase by phase, because they have a provision to have 30 spaces on, in their lots in Terrace Avenue where they're really underutilized until they start phase three, and that helps make up the deficit where they get to phase three. So they're looking at it both phases.
Right. And then, like I said, just, we could, you know, add 17 more lifts in phase one, if we need to do that down the road, you could order us to do that as a condition of any approval. And then we'd still have phase three available to make a larger garage there if we needed to add more there also, after we get some experience with phase one, as to what's happening.
And, just for this document that says marginal analysis, you keep talking about rentable square feet, but our code requires gross. So are these actual gross numbers, or are you?
Uh, yes, those are gross numbers, I'm, it shouldn't be our.
I just want to make sure that we're, since, since it will boil down to just a few spots, I want to make sure that everyone's counting the same thing.
This restaurant square footage doesn't matter to you, because you have to go by seats.
Yeah.
So, I want to just highlight, um, I'm not, I mean, a lot of cities use a rental square feet for parking counts, because when you use gross, gross means you're putting, you're allocating parking for stairwells, elevators, storage rooms, and a lot of other unoccupied space within office buildings or retail buildings. And so, when you, you've got that extra buffer here in Middleton, when we do everything based on gross here, you've got this extra built-in buffer, because you're, you're counting parking demand for space that doesn't have anybody occupying it.
Except that Walker does take a reduction of 15% before they apply their numbers for the shared parking to account for that difference between gross and...
Gross and rental. And presumably Walker has some methodology for understanding time of day?
Yes.
For the shared parking, okay.
Absolutely.
And that's the key point.
Yep, and when we come back here, we will give you their studies, and I'll actually maybe send a link, so you can look at the one from August, and you can look at the one that they sent us in March. And they haven't really started this latest one, because we just got the most recent change last Monday, and Ezra, who works on it for us, was on vacation, so, but we will get all that information, so you have it and can look through it.
And we just want to have a very vibrant, exciting, dynamic Middleton Center in downtown. And...
I just have one comment, that, you know, Terrence, you mentioned that 1,900 spaces a couple of times. So I guess in your case, you have to look at your building and not those 1,900 spaces, and, uh, those 1,900 spaces from what I remember, that's from the sort of west of the Beltline in a much larger area. And I don't remember if it included St. Bernard Church as well as fire station, but, you know, in your case, you should, you should just provide the spaces for, uh, you know, what you're constructing for the downtown, so...
Yes.
So that's what's important, and 1,900 really isn't relevant here. Now, Eileen, you had the, you know, Terrence had some of the comments and questions, and you had some answers for those? Do you want to throw those now?
Well, I wasn't really prepared to do it right now, but...
So, to answer your question, the, yeah, the 1,900 is just in downtown. This is an exhibit from the Walker study, so it does not have anything west of the Beltline, it's just downtown.
No, 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 east, um, yeah, east of the Beltline, sorry, I, I misspoke, yeah.
And what I can tell you is that Walker Parking has looked at this based on Urban Land Institute's requirement, and they have looked at it in a cornfield or greenfield, and then they've looked at the demand side, and, sort of, we're talking about, you know, what is the demand on a, on a daily basis, an hourly basis, and that's what they're, they're looking at. Now, we may still have people that need to use some of the other 1,900, because this, I mean, I think it's going to be a very successful development, we're trying to come up with something that's less than the 600 spaces that would otherwise be required by our parking code, and, and make that work. And we aren't there yet, we're almost there, but we're, with the latest change is we have some more work to do. I, by the way, I just want to say, I think the buildings, the two buildings that you have so far, they look great.
Yeah.
Every time I go by, I snap and hug. I think it looks nice.
Yeah, it's coming along pretty well, and I misspoke, I meant the east of the Beltline, so...
But, and if you come down, and I know you're down here a lot, but if you come down here almost any evening, except Sunday evenings, a little slow, it's busy. I mean, all the restaurants, we have 10 restaurants or so, you know, already, I think yours will be a great addition, but there's a lot of people.
Well, I remember, we're tentatively scheduled Saturday, July 24th, I think it is, uh, from noon to 2:00 for a grand opening. So just mark your calendar, Saturday, July 24th, noon to 2:00. We're going to hopefully have a street parking, or street closing permit, and then we'll have some performers for the grand opening, as well as tours of the office, the apartments and the retail. You get to go inside the building and see everything, it'd be kind of cool.
Yeah.
Any more questions, Paul, Terrence? Yeah, so we and I would say, you know, we have to get it right, it's a very important part of the downtown, and I, we would be happy if you find out that there are extra surplus parking, but we would be even happier if you just, you know, don't create problem downtown, and you have adequate parking for your, for your center there, yeah. Go ahead, Paul, you have it?
I'll, I'll just say, since I regularly read the Middleton Review very carefully, that there is an advertisement, uh, that you have advertising parking spaces for rent, so apparently there's already a perceived surplus in parking.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the city started enforcing the two-hour street rule, so they started giving out warnings, right, and then they're going to start ticketing. And, and we all know, people like us, we, you know, we work downtown, we know employees who park on the street, pay dollars and tie up the retail spaces for customers, they're tying it up for eight hours. You know, maybe we can help that by providing them with an alternative.
How are you thinking renting out?
Uh, I don't know, I, I just wanted to see if there was any need...
Are you ready to get back to getting Walker's study?
Yeah, I, I don't know, I just thought I'd see how many people would be interested first. I don't, I've not got any calls yet, but I think it's going to take a little while for it to, usually what happens is they call you in, like, November, you know what I mean? When winter comes.
There should be some sort of approval process if that goes forward.
Yes.
An evaluation of the utilization of the parking.
Okay, any questions or comments on this one? Okay, so this was for discussion and information, so you think we covered number three as well?
Yes, yes, I just thought, I could have separated, because when we get back to approving them, it would be separately, but just the discussion is kind of all together.
Okay, well, thank you, so it covers two and three, so, so the next one is Resolution Number 201719, Resolution of Necessity of Taking for Land for a Public-Pprivate Partnership on the West Side of Clark Street, and Eileen is...
And Abbey's, no.
Okay, Abbey will cover it, so...
This resolution, along with the next item on the agenda, are the first step that the city needs to take in order to potentially acquire property. So this is property that we're looking at right now, um, this would be an acquisition of property using TIF funding. The acquisition would be for removal of blight, but also because we're working with the school district right now to try to find land that would help the school district expand their needs for, right now they're overcapacity at the high school by about 150 students, I think it is. And they, their projections, they've hired a planner to help them with their projections, and they know that in the next few years, they're going to be significantly higher over their current capacity at the high school. So, it's still pretty conceptual at this point, but what we're contemplating would be a public-private partnership, potentially one or two buildings. It would be a redevelopment of property, and the school district would be going forward for a referendum in the fall of 2018, if we are able to move this, this project forward.
So, the school is actually heading the whole thing, this is just the start here, so the school is in charge of the whole process, so, and they will make the announcement set with time. So right now, we just need to pass the resolution for the necessity of doing this, so...
So I'll move an approval of Resolution 201719, and recommend approval to the committee council.
Okay, need a second?
Second.
Good question, what, can you explain a resolution of necessity? I mean, how, what's, what, how does this whole process work?
Eileen would do a better job, because she's, she's been through more of them, but we did recently approve one for the Parmenter and University Intersection Project.
Right.
And that, that's the, the first step that's required when the city is looking to acquire property potentially through eminent domain, although...
Okay, it's because of eminent domain potentially being included in it?
Yeah, and we're not looking at eminent domain for, for this project, we believe that we are working with willing sellers, and we don't plan to go through the process where...
But we would have, if we needed to, we would have the ability to use eminent domain, and that's why it's called a, okay, I got it, thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, if there are no more questions, I call the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the resolution passes. So the next resolution is again related to it, Resolution Number 2017-20, Resolution Determining Necessity of Taking for a Mixed Use Building Potentially and for Educational Purpose on the West Side of Clark Street. So...
This is basically, we need one resolution for each parcel.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So I'll move approval of Resolution 201720, and recommend approval to the committee council.
I'll second that again.
Okay. Any discussion, any questions? If they say no question or discussion, I call for question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the resolution passes. So the next one is the Amendment to Lighting Ordinance 33.078 relating to flags and similar objects, and Mark is going to explain.
Yeah, and I was just coordinating with the License and Ordinance Committee, which was literally just talking about it. And something that came up in that meeting, which, which I suggested, was, in talking with the reps at the VFW, um, there's a national standard, a federal standard for a minimum amount of, of illumination, so we should have, obviously, we, the intent is to accommodate that, but I would recommend having some language added, which we talked about in committee there, to have, for example, 1.25 times the ma, the maximum would be 1.25 times the minimum standard. So it gives them a little bit of flexibility, but caps it so that somebody doesn't want to illuminate the, the flag by twice what the required requirement is.
But this is for discussion, and this is not for approval now?
No, it's not, it's, I just wanted to update you that that's the intent, is to add language to the ordinance amendment to specify maximum amount of lighting. And, um, I'm, I would think the LNO committee was, was comfortable with that. I mentioned to them that we would be establishing the, or setting the public hearing, and they were comfortable with that as well.
Okay. So, do we, we don't, this is just, we don't need to take any action on this one, right?
To set the public hearing.
So we need to set the public hearings, so...
I'll move we set the public hearing for Tuesday, June 13th at 7:05 PM.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All right, any discussion? Okay, I call the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So, question passes to set the public hearing.
Mark, how tall is this flagpole?
I don't know the specific one, I, I don't recall.
100 feet?
Oh, no, I, I could find out.
40 feet?
I, I don't remember the height.
This is mostly driven by the VFW one?
Yeah.
Oh, the VFW?
Yes, 40 feet.
I said 100, just...
I was just going to tell Mark, this is a very illuminating discussion.
I don't think that holds a candle to our previous discussion.
Oh, there we go.
There's a, it's about 20 feet.
Oh, just 20 feet?
Yeah, I took a pole.
Took a pole.
Wow, this is getting pretty interesting.
Let me just throw out the idea, the concept of this, I mean, I'm, I don't know, the lighting standards always seem to be set, and then we change them, and we change them for, there are, and I've got the, some sheets from companies that make downlights.
Mm-huh.
And I think that would be a better standard. Now, they claim they can downlight up to 80 feet.
On the top of a flagpole?
Yeah, mm-huh. And, so, since we're not talking that much, and we're talking 40 feet, even, even looking up, driving, and looking up into it is probably not going to be a terrible hazard. But, you know, we get into these ide, these ideas always with the, have minimal lighting and stuff, but what does that mean? You know, minimal lighting, and at what point do you actually measure it? And of course, the people who put, who order these things don't measure them, they don't know how to measure them, and it's, you know, I think we should just look at stuff that's straightforward. If we've got, I got a car lot, and I need to light that thing, I put downlight on it. I don't, I don't shoot light up in the air, and I think we should explore that before we actually take action on this.
Well, so we are setting only the public hearing, so, so I think, so that will come out in the hearing, right?
Apartment of...
Yeah, we set only the date for the public hearing.
Yes, that's right.
This resolution is only for that part.
That's right, I'm just, I'm, I may bring it up two weeks later, and it's even more of a problem.
I was just going to ask, if the, the phrase in the, the phrase in the proposed ordinance beginning in A, saying that, or otherwise cannot be reasonably or practically illuminated, practicably illuminated with downward directed lighting, I'm just wondering if that adequately addresses his concern?
I'm sorry.
The phrase that says, right, so it seems to suggest the zoning administrator has to determine whether a downward directed lighting is not reasonable or practicable under this ordinance, and does that address your concern?
No.
So you, okay.
Our standard is downlight.
And, and I will say, the history here, the reason why this came to light, no pun intended, is because the fire department first decided that it was too difficult to maintain the, the downlighting that they had, and they abandoned it, probably a couple years ago. It wasn't brought to my attention right away that that happened. And then Doug and, um, the VFW folks from VFW requested this specifically, too, to have uplighting, and I, I can't, I don't want to take words from him, but...
No, I can ask Mayor Doug to say a few words, whatever you'd like to say.
All I, all I want to ask is that we be treated like another city property, I mean, you're light out here, front shines up, the fire department shines up, the golf course shines up, and it's not that we're going to be, you know, putting in a big spotlight, we're just going to put in as all the light as we can that illuminates the flag. And we look to see if there's a standard for how many lumens or some sort of measurement, but it just says that it has to provide enough light to illuminate it to a passing, a person in passing. So that's pretty minimal. And, uh, the other aspect of that, it is, you know, within a block of residential property in one direction, but, um, there's a lot of park lights over there anyway, and I don't see this as adding, um, a lot of lumens to the park.
No, I agree, I agree with... No, I agree, I agree with you, I really do. But this is your chance to be a trendsetter, you know, lead.
Yeah.
But the rest of these things are all grandfathered, and those were for people apparently didn't know about downlight.
The thing to have is downward, is, you know, we have to get them so far above the flag, and then you've got maintenance, and it's, you know, difficult to change the light, and I'm not sure how often they have to be changed, but apparently, the fire department realized it was a significant problem, so.
They probably didn't have equipment to get up there.
Which we do have, don't we?
Anybody gets it.
So, Mark, what we do is just truck it down from Terrence's project.
Let me, one more thing, unless, you know, it doesn't bear on your decision, but we originally scheduled the dedication for Memorial Day, and we couldn't get the dirt out of there, get dry, get the, we've got trees that are going in around the tribute to dress it up. So, now, we moved it back to probably July 1st or somewhere there. So, that's the timetable that we're hoping to meet, so that we can do the dedication. We had a thank you dinner for all the donors Sunday night, and we told them that the dedication is coming, even though the tribute itself is done, except for the light and the planting. So, that's the urgency from our perspective, is to get it dedicated as soon as we can, so that it can start to be maintained by the city.
Can I suggest that you rent a light?
Pardon?
There are, there are numerous, there are several companies in town that do this kind of lighting, and they could rent a light, or maybe ATC would loan us a light.
For the function, he's saying that if you really needed to do it, so somebody could actually rent the lights for that particular time, so that's what he's saying.
Well, it doesn't really do us any good if we can't get a permanent light on it.
Well, we were talking about it, we have plenty of time before July 1st to go with the concept.
Well, then, we're, well-
Well, we all want to get approval.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are working on getting rid of that soil, so that's already in the, it's going to be happening soon, so. I know that has stayed there for way too long, so, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so anyway, that's, that's our-
Okay. Thank you, Doug.
That's good.
We hope this little light is not a big issue. So, thank you for your consideration.
So, Mark, you want to answer that there are some lights which are already lighted that way?
Yeah, and I think some of them are grandfathered, as, as was suggested.
Okay. Okay, so it's already happening, so it's just for the new lights. Any more discussion on this one? So, all those in favor of setting the hearing, the public hearing date, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so the motion passes. So, the next one is the important one here, the appointment of a commission representative on pedestrian, bicycle, and transit committee, and Kathy has kindly agreed that she would be happy to do it. We need a motion now, so.
Second.
All right, so all those, I know everybody's wanting to be on that committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, Kathy's on bike and ped, so. So, the next one is again, we have to point two people to the, well, they say, we need three people on that Milton-Westport Joint Zoning Committee, and Dennis is already there, so the Kurt agreed, and Leaf agreed, too, so we need motions. Leaf, that's true, right?
Sure.
Okay, so we need a motion for both, well, we can make one for Kurt and then for Leaf, so.
I'm going to, Kurt, to the Westport Zone, Joint Zoning Committee.
Second.
All right, so any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Quickly.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so the next one is for Leaf now, so.
Oh, I thought it was for both.
Oh, was it both?
Well, I thought we broke it out, I said Kurt, I didn't know.
I nominate Leaf.
Okay, sorry.
I nominate Leaf to the Middleton-Westport Transit Zoning Committee.
All right, need a second. This is quite an honor, so, okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So, all right.
I understand.
Motion passes, so both Kurt and Leaf and Dennis are on that commission, so.
They're agreeing.
I'm going to come there and see why there was so much reluctance. Okay, so the-
Just two meetings.
Well, the, we need, we don't need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, need a motion to adjourn.